We're ready.
You can call a meeting to order.
Yes.
Ready.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Are you here?
Yeah. All right.
Sherry Barron.
Here.
From McFarland.
Here.
From Eryman Stew.
Here.
Here.
Here. Um, quitting the meeting, I see we have Lake Can. Anybody else? Nope. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here for public participation? Don't all get up at once. All right. Um, acceptance of the minutes from June 19, which feels like 100 years ago.
Who took so?
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Most who cares. Um, presentations to the school committee. So happy to see faces again. So why don't you update us on how, on the launch of the year?
It's been pretty good so far. I'm just.
Pardon?
Everything's fine.
That's it? No, you have a report. And it went smoothly.
At the start of the month, ARHS opened its doors for the 2019 to 2020 school year to 737 students. Students walked a gauntlet of teachers who welcomed their arrival with clapping and cheering. 环节 for the fall play, The Outsiders, took place and rehearsals have started. Sarah Little, class of 2020, ARHS band member, played taps as part of the local fire department's observance of 9/11. Thank you, Sarah, for providing this important service as part of 9/11. ARHS has also been named a unified champion school by the Special Olympics for the third year in a row. We have been recognized for our school's commitment to fostering a socially inclusive climate that emphasizes acceptance, respect, and human dignity for all students. And Monica Hesse, girl, author of Girl in the Blue Coat, which was our summer reading book, addressed our students at four assemblies. Hesse shared her writing process, details about research in Girl in the Blue Coat, personal anecdotes, and also responded to our questions.
The fall athletics are underway. The teams are doing excellent so far. Uh, if you want to learn more about their standings, as well as when they play, you can visit Ponacott's website, as well as the South Coast Conference website. Golf coach Dan Rose had his 400th win. Congrats to Coach Rose. College fairs will be starting up again. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors will all be attending one of many schools hosted college fairs. There will be one tomorrow, Thursday the 26th, with over 25 colleges attending. For parents and guardians of the class of 2020, there will be a financial aid night on October 3, hosted by MIFA and the ARHS lecture hall. Email Paul Ammone with any questions. And Student Council is hosting their annual late night this Friday. Student Council is also pleased to announce its financial support for the upcoming speaker, Chris Heron, scheduled for October 29.
Thank you very much. It's great to see you again.
Good to be back.
For another banner year.
Excellent, Jen.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
If everybody is amenable, I'd like to take a couple of things out of order. Item 7E is the class of 64 donation. I think Mr. Go ahead.
The chair, if I may, even before we do the donation, if I could just do the brief intros that will lead into the donation?
Well, I think you want to say something, too.
Do that first. It's clock. Go right ahead.
Well, this is the class of 1964 that's going to give a donation. And I'm not sure that everybody, everybody here knows that it's pretty widely known in the two communities that it was the greatest class that ever graduated.
Of course.
Academically talented, athletically gifted, community. Did I mention I was a member of that class? But Donna, uh, Donna Beard is here to present a check tonight. Uh, we've had some discussion with the principals. We'd like to make sure that money is used after high school. And I talked to Barbara Stocky, and she's come up with an idea that we're all amenable to, so we're pretty excited about doing this.
Let's get that. Starty.
So on behalf of a Ponacott Regional High School, I'm requesting that the school committee accept this gracious donation from the class of 1964 with acknowledgement to the family of Emily Cudworth, who was also a donor to that class. Is it, has it been, has that donation been accepted?
Well, I guess we, we were going to wait for the presentation. I don't, I don't see us refusing it.
I don't, I would hope not.
Well, we'll make it clean. I'll make a move to accept the check.
Beautiful. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, I don't think any oppose, any abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am representing the class of 1964, and after we had our 50-year reunion, we decided that we were going to disperse the remainder of the money that was in our treasury. Uh, and we decided that we would do it by making a donation to a Ponacott High School. And at the time of the reunion, Leon Cudworth also donated more money to our treasury in memory of his wife, Emily O'Brien Cudworth, who was a member of our class. So the check that I'm going to give to you is a combination of Leon's donation and what was remaining in our treasury. We had decided not to have any more reunions because it was very, very time-consuming, an awful lot of work, and we had failed at a 40th reunion, but we were successful with a whole 50-year, um, weekend, one of which was a tour of the high school because someone had asked for that. And that's about it. Emily was a member of our class, and she passed away somewhere between the 35th reunion and I think it was right around the 40th because when we sent out our feelers, Emily had written back that she would attend, and then Leon called us back and said that she would not be attending. Uh, and Emily was also, um, a teacher at Freetown Elementary School for many years. So that's all I have to say, and here's your check.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And please thank the family of Emily Cudworth as well.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. And we should have invited him to come tonight, but it just.
No, but I'll be happy to communicate with him, so if you could get his address.
Okay. And the other thing was, um, we want to make sure that her name is spelled correctly because it's kind of a fun spelling.
I bet I can find it.
You probably can. Just because it's in the call, I can.
All right. I will make sure.
So thank you very much for the generosity of the class of 64, the best class a Ponacott ever had. Very, very grateful. Thank you. We're very grateful.
I'm dismissed.
Well, I want, I did want to let you know that I remember Emily Cudworth very, very well from having kids go through her class. She's the one that started the whole Freetown history unit back in the day. She did a lot. She was an impactful teacher, very inspirational teacher, and very humble. Very, very humble.
And I might say, I'm sure Bob also remembers Emily's mother, Ethel O'Brien, very well.
A legend.
Legend.
A true legend.
A legend in return, and her after.
Thank you so much.
She was a fifth grade teacher when we were in fifth grade.
Oh. Yay. So Dr. Starkey, were you going to continue my interrupting?
No, not at all. If you'd like me to, I will. I can tell you that the funds will be used to partially subsidize a large screen in the cafeteria to give us an opportunity to communicate with the students throughout the day. So we'll run the announcements on there for the students who are in there for senior privileges. Uh, in an ideal world, it'll have access to the internet as well and access to streaming so that we can run the news for the kids during the day so that when they're in the cafeteria, they have access to that. It'll also help us out anytime we have to do a presentation in the cafeteria, we'll have access to a ready screen that's already there, and like I said, internet capabilities. Uh, it's a project we've been looking to do, but it keeps kind of sliding down, and this donation is going to help us do that. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
I'd just like to add that we have living proof here that we've hardly aged at all in those years.
That's right. That's right. Noted.
This is the last, this is the reunion. And we figured, you've got to get rid of this money.
Well, we are grateful. Thank you. So we're ready to go.
Mrs. Fox, while we have Dr. Starkey at the podium, there are a few other high school items.
There are. And she's there.
I'm excited. Um, we'll do the donation first. We'll do that first, and then I know Dr. Starkey's excited, and we are as well, to introduce some of the newest members of our leadership team with family here as well. So we'll try to be quick on the other piece, which I think we can be, but there is one other high school donation.
Yep.
That is my recommendation, Dr. Starkey's recommendation, that we accept, and that is from the Athletic Boosters. It was in your packet.
Yep.
Barbara, if you could just make a specific reference, and then hopefully they'll take action on it.
Right. So the Athletic Boosters donated signage for above the gym, so when you drive into the school, you can see that it says or will say as soon as you accept the donation. Laker pride with the school A on top. Uh, previous to that, we had the area painted, cleaned up, and this was the thought and the part of the Athletic Boosters because we had nothing outside of the gym, acknowledging that it was the gym, we're demonstrating our school pride, uh, so they offered to donate enough money to fund that. So they donated $1,950 behind your acceptance, uh, to put some signage out in front of the gym.
Awesome.
I'll make a motion to accept the $1,950 for the gymnasian signage.
Thank you.
By the boosters.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Most who cares.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara, do you want to?
We doing field trips?
Field trips in there. We'll get that housekeeping and go to the real important.
So I have two field trips. The first one is a request for overnight and out-of-state field trips from Mr. Rosen and Mrs. Cronin. It's the annual, um, appeal for approval of out-of-state field trips for DECA. So as you know, DECA is, uh, by and large, our most subscribed and popular club here at the school. It's also a club that brings great success to a wide variety of students. So our two DECA advisors are looking for permission to take our students on a myriad of trips throughout the course of the year. I can answer any specific questions you might have before you consider approval.
Anyone?
Want to prove? Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all set.
Thank you very much. Following right in line with that, I have a request from art teacher Krista Lima to take students in conjunction with DECA on a field trip to Washington, DC, so they're departing at the same time, likely staying at the same place. Uh, and the purpose of her trip is for the students in the Art Share Travel Club to go to some of the museums in DC and inspire themselves to create local artwork. For example, the last time her trip was approved and she went off to Philadelphia, the kids came back very excited about painting murals. And if you leave this library and you take a left, you can see our core values mural that was a direct result of the students going on that trip.
She didn't quite write up.
Yes, she did.
Every minute accounted for. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Most who cares.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So not to take anything away from the donations and the field trip, but one of another exciting activity that Dr. Starkey, while she's on the podium, we get the, so she gets the privilege of introducing one of us to as members of our leadership team and family here as well, patiently waited. So Barbara, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So with the transition of Mr. Higgins to the middle school, we were able to cast a wide net and interview a good number of candidates for an assistant principal position. Very, very pleased with our choice. I'm going to introduce to you tonight Mr. Andrew P. Davie and his daughter Samantha. And Mr. Davie's going to come up and tell you just a little bit about his history.
Sorry. Uh, I started my career on the Stoughton Public Schools. I was a four through 12 instrumental music teacher, traveled to all the schools there, and then made my jump into administration in the Fairhaven Public Schools. I was a middle school assistant principal for four years there. Um, we're actually residents of Lakeville, so Samantha's going to be a Laker one day. We were just checking out the volleyball game prior to coming down. She's tall, so I'm hoping maybe she'll play volleyball one day. Who knows? And, uh, I'm just really excited. It's been a great transition. It's an amazing leadership team here. The students have been amazing. The staff's been incredible. I'm just really excited to join, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, Samantha.
And then I think I'm done. Turning things, right? Am I done?
Yes. Yeah. And I can introduce the next, the other, your counterpart and your former assistant principal. If you'd like to do that.
Former assistant principal, man who knows everything I know, no, I now know, running the middle school, Mr. John E. Higgins.
Thank you, Dr. Starkey. I think Dr. Starkey taught me everything I know, but not everything that she knows. Uh, before I do introduce, uh, Mr. Brian Olivera, our new assistant principal at the middle school, I would like to just do a quick review of our opening, uh, weeks here in the middle school. Um, we actually started, uh, really, we started the week before that first day of school on August 29, and we had our sixth grade orientation. Uh, at that orientation, we had over 300 attendees. That includes parents, family members, and students. Um, we also had over 12 student volunteers to help out. We had our curriculum leaders, our nurse, and our guidance counselor, uh, part, a few of our guidance counselors were participating in the, um, in that night. And that was a very successful evening. We've had some great feedback from the parents regarding, um, their experience and their, how it really made a big difference in terms of the first day for their, their students moving on to sixth grade into the new building. So that was very successful. We're very happy about that. We have, um, actually eight new staff members. Well, nine if you include myself. Uh, the, uh, the eighth member would be Mr. Olivera. We have seven staff members, seven instructional staff members. Two of those are from retirements. Two are from new budgeted positions, and three are from resignations from last year. In addition to that, while it's not a new staff member to the district, it's a new, uh, we're hosting now the van transportation office, um, in our building, so we have a few more, uh, new faces that are in and out of our building on a regular basis. We've introduced a number of new, um, elements of technology. We have two new Chrome book carts in our building, as well as three Chrome tubs that we've been able to, uh, locate in our, uh, special education program rooms, which has been very helpful. We have for, improved our building safety over the summer, um, thanks to the, um, the generous, um, decisions made by this committee. Uh, we've had 32 security cameras installed. Uh, we have upgraded our key swipe system to all our entryways, as well as we've, um, we've had our air chiller system repaired, uh, in which case now our third floor is actually livable. And I can tell you that, uh, most recently, we did turn it off because it was so unseasonably cool, and then it warmed up again, and boy, you could really feel it on that third floor. So we turned it back on, and everything's back to, uh, a livable temperature in the building, which is very nice. With regard to our extracurriculars at Freetown Lakewood Middle School, uh, our Lego robotic club is started this week. We have, um, the largest number of students interested in the program. I might also add, we have the largest number of female students interested in the program, which is great. There are over five, I believe, right now, and that's a dramatic increase over what the interest had been in the past. Our student ambassador program, Friends of the Falcon, is accepting applications at this time, um, and they're expecting to have quite a turnout for that as well. And, uh, in terms of athletics, we have two fall sports that we are running. We have co-ed soccer and we have cross-country boys and girls. We are, at this point, undefeated. We're 5-0 in co-ed soccer, and that's playing against the boys within the Mass, within the Massachusetts League. Uh, and then in both boys and girls cross-country, each team is 2-0. So in fact, we are at 9-0 at this point in the season. But I also want to comment that we recently got any, we got an email from a parent from Somerset, um, complimenting not only our play in soccer, but also our sportsmanship, uh, and how amazed this parent was at how well our students were playing and that how, just how good they were in, in playing in an all-boys league. So we were very happy about that, and the coaches are, uh, to be, uh, to get the attribution for that. So thank you very much.
That needs to.
I would like to now introduce Brian Olivera, who is our newest member of the administration team at the middle school. Uh, Brian joined us after an exhaustive search, looking for an assistant principal far and wide in the South Coast area, uh, and we are extremely happy with his, um, with his joining our team. Uh, we have gotten to know each other quite well, working very hard, making lots of new changes throughout the building, and, um, really excited about working together going forward. So without further ado, Brian Olivera.
Thank you. Um, so this is my eighth year in education. First six-plus years I spent up in Holbrook Junior Senior High School as a math teacher and a math department head. Uh, last year, I received my master's administration down at Providence College, and then jumped into administration down at Westport Junior Senior High School, where I was the dean of students. Uh, just like Drew, I'm resident Lakeville, live about a minute down the streets. This is absolutely fantastic. If you saw my daughter, Bria, who's just here waiting to get picked up by her mother. Um, she's one, so similar to Drew's daughter, a future Laker, so we're pretty excited. Um, great experience so far. Everybody's been extremely welcoming, the staff, the kids, the community. So, uh, real excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Happy to have you. Mr. Higgins, that co-ed team, I'm seeing a press release on that.
You're what?
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
I like, that's just a personal thing. I might be on the commission of the decision.
Well, Mr. Higgins, I should know, Mrs. Fox, Mrs. Fox is saying that off, the, off of the fact that you started with a science group.
Yeah.
Having more female leaders in there, too, right up her alley.
Right up my alley.
So that was, I didn't see the script, too, so that was well done, so.
Just saying.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, welcome. Both Jack and Barbara, we have a, just two more examples of just a talented leadership team that I surround myself with, and we are, uh, these young ladies that are coming into the schools in a few years, uh, we're in good hands in relation to our leadership team, and I'm proud to have them on board. Thanks for coming out tonight. I, I did ask them to come out tonight, knowing how many commitments they make, but just at the very beginning with the idea that if we got them up front, we could let them go home to their families and enjoy a little bit of the evening. So thank you for coming out.
Yes. Thank you all, and welcome to the new folks. All right. So now we're back to the regular agenda. We did cover a lot of cases.
We go bounce right back to old business first week.
Yeah. First week of school.
So you've heard a little bit, and actually, that was a little bit of the purpose as well, Dr. Starkey, between the students, Dr. Starkey and Mr. Higgins, you heard a little bit of middle school, high school. It's really not the first week of school report. It's the first 16 days of school reports, right, in relation to kind of where we're at, just the way our meeting fell. Um, and we've had a, we've had a real solid start. There are going to be a lot of items that the directors are going to talk about, and typically I take away their, their thunder in relation to find, the buildings and grounds and, and the programs and curriculum. So I'm going to stay a little bit away from that and just generally speak that the fact that we've had a, an excellent, probably in my six years, the smoothest start in relation, and that really is a credit to the leadership and the staff and people, and then community supporting and your support for where we're at. I will reference a couple of items, I think, that are important to note. The transportation, um, update will be in the October 9th. So we're, we're, obviously, transportation in the first few weeks is always an ongoing issue, uh, but, but we feel real confident that, um, in both schools, I was at the elementary schools, both elementary schools today. I was at dismissal at S. Swanson, and we're working through some of those items. We have designed buses for the, for foreign aftercare program, so in the past, kids have been transported with a bus route that no longer exists in the afternoon, so now those buses are going directly there. Huge for the kids who are getting dropped off and being given some numbers and safety, and also for the program. So that's, that's been great, and that's going well at both schools. That hasn't happened in some time, both Free Town Elementary School and S. Swanson. And the other piece, unfortunately, that I just want to share with you is just the proactive, um, efforts we've made with Triple E, right, in reference to the start of the school. I think if there's any one item that, you know, has kind of certainly been in the forefront of so many communities in the Commonwealth and throughout the area, it's us. I will say this, though. I think Freetown, Lakeville, fortunately or unfortunately, we have a lot of experience, right, when dealing with, uh, the situation year to year. It's not a new situation. Certainly, the elevation and the serious nature and the fatalities and things certainly have led it to a, you know, whole different, uh, tier, but I just want to reassure the community, and I've done that through the one call and numerous occasions and so forth, that in addition to the three aerial sprays that the state did in the area, we did two ground spraying, one before the kids even came to school on the campus here, and one additional, and that was with Plymouth mosquito control. And then we actually did one additional ground spraying at both of the elementary schools for the playground area, in addition to doing all the necessary proactive steps, such as, you know, curtailing activities in the early morning and evening. Those were not unusual, and I really give a ton of credit to the residents in both towns who have accepted that, right, in instances, um, that people understand that we had to move a football game to four o'clock, and if you happened to be at last Friday afternoon football game, a great win. The place was packed. I mean, it was one of, it was a huge crowd, good turnout, and, but people understand. And, and so the only things that we are having in the evening involve inside activities, school committee meeting, those types of activities. Uh, we've really made a concerted effort for recess and things. In fact, had a cut discussion just the other day with the elementary principals about, we do have outdoor recess for the short timeframe because we feel we've taken proactive approaches, and it's during the course of the school day, 15 to 20 minutes. Um, we feel very confident, got a couple of calls in relation to parents and understand those circumstances. We are just kind of probably taking a look at those, those days, although there haven't been many, right, in September, where you get some drizzle and rain, and it's a little bit more damp, and you tend to typically, as an elementary principal, want to get them outside. We're being a little more cautious there. We just haven't had a whole lot of examples, as most of you know, right? It's been pretty sunny and dry, so, um, I just want to share that from a school community perspective. We have a great relationship with a board of health in each town, with both Plymouth and Bristol County. It's kind of, you know, it's, it's a complicated circumstance to work out something, set it up with FES and then have to do it with AES, but everybody has been real receptive to that, and I think part of it has been the experience in what we've done in previous years. It was not atypical, for example, for our athletic programs to have to change their schedules around in games, and yet you saw a lot of headlines in other communities that weren't used to doing.
They were not accustomed to it. We've done it many times.
It was not atypical, for example, for our athletic programs to have to change their schedules around in games, and yet you saw a lot of headlines in other communities that weren't used to doing.
They were not accustomed to it. We've done it many times, the signage goes up right away.
We are, and I'll give you an example, just one this week that my athletic director and principal just left worked out. CCON's still playing their games at night, no criticism. We asked that they, we had a couple of parent requests in relation to that and we moved the game to four o'clock, even though it's their game, and they were accommodating of that request. We did enough time, they're still playing the game at night, you know, I, I'm not questioning what communities are doing, I just don't think the mosquitoes have boundaries in relation to where the lines are drawn, right, where it's at, so. That was an example though of us reaching out, even though we control our games, we can't control the away games, and CCON was most accommodating and moved it from four, from 6:30, so our team has an away football game at four o'clock there.
Is it four? I thought it was Saturday.
To do that.
One o'clock Saturday.
Oh, they moved it, they moved it one more time then. All right, so breaking news, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gage, with a, with a daughter who's probably involved, so, okay, so, thank you. Jose's probably, he was probably being polite, not correcting me there.
I heard eleven, so.
Okay.
You heard one, I heard eleven, so, okay, we'll figure that. I'll figure it out.
No, you're right, it's one o'clock. But those, so that's, generally speaking, Mrs. Fox, that's, those are the activities that, we've had a great start. I'm going to talk about class size and things when we get to some of the other ends, but generally speaking, you know.
Thank you. Sherry, you had a, I had a couple of parents question in the CCON game and also the New Bedford game, I guess, do you have an away New Bedford game? I haven't, I haven't looked at any of this, but.
I'll look that out on the schedule, but some of it's in the moving, it's a, it's an ongoing situation with some.
Depending on the weather.
If it's in November.
Right, so, a lot of them have changed already though.
Okay. CCON is this week, right?
Yeah. CCON was, was supposed to be Friday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the class size, we're on the next one.
Class size, you do have the, the update of 9/18. I think these numbers are changing still, so just stay tuned, the next, October 9th we'll have a meeting. So that's 24 up from last year. When I had sent my original super tense corners, about 34, but then you have adjustments, you have students who don't show up, who they haven't done the proper registration and withdraw and are attending school elsewhere. Just to give you, so the snapshot of what you see there, primarily our elementary school numbers are going up and our secondary school numbers are about the same. At S. Swamson, that's nine more students than last year, October 1. At Free Town Elementary School, that's 16 more students than last year. So 25 total to elementary schools, you can kind of predict and forecast what that looks like down the line. At the intermediate school, 437, that's six more students than last year, a year ago. The middle school is actually down seven students, just a class that moved on, and the high school, that's the exact same number as October 1 of last year. So district-wide, 24 more students. We're certainly not seeing a declining enrollment as you look at the elementary numbers, it appears to be growing. The other piece that's come up, it appears we're capturing more students staying at the high school too and going from the middle school to the high school when you look at percentages. About 75% of our eighth grade class moved on to the, to a ponit quit high school, with the vast majority of the other students going to Old Colony, which is not atypical, but a smaller number than we've had in the past.
Just a question on the pre-K number, is that lower than what we anticipated, or is that?
I think the maximum number is 50. That can go into the, into that piece and it really becomes the needs of the children. So this is a section.
I think Derek had a.
Yeah, what's our choice numbers?
I was going to ask.
How do those?
Where do they fit in here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have those right in front. We, again, keep in mind, we did not accept students in school choice at the elementary school, at the elementary grades, right, we didn't open grades up there. So most of our students who were school choice came in at the intermediate school, middle school and high school. Again, just, and I can get that for the October 9th meeting, those are the schools that we're not seeing high numbers in enrollment, so it would make sense. We did not open up, if you recall, the primary grades to school choice and I think that was probably a good strategy and looking at the numbers, right, as it reflects.
I would agree.
And that was certainly supported. But I can have that, I can have that information for you at the 9th.
Mrs. Barron, you have a question?
Mr. Owen, last year, at this meeting, there were 50 students pre-K, so.
We are down.
Down a little bit. That could grow tomorrow, right?
It could. A great program.
And the only staffing update we currently have posted on the website, two long-term substitute positions, special education teacher position and a computer tech, and I'm actually interviewing that for, for a long-term sub tomorrow. Those are the only jobs that are currently posted and need to be filled.
Okay, great. So, and now we move on to Ashley, I think with the.
Yeah, for the next couple of questions.
Yeah, CND.
Start, the FY19 close, we have completed the close to D. We did end the year in a surplus of $125,000. That's what we had discussed with the towns that we would have in the general fund for FY19. We did meet that goal. So you'll see where it stood in the general fund and then the second chart shows our projected E and D. This is not going to be certified until October, but we're looking to certify $600 and $5,000. It's a little bit less than what I had projected throughout the school year and that's due to revenue not coming in as high as we anticipated.
Questions? No?
So how about the 20 budget?
Not a lot to talk about so far in 20, budget related, but we're on target. Having monthly meetings with all of the directors was, and I meet twice a month after admin council, Pat and I are meeting regularly about the title grants and I meet with Craig and our new director, Greg Goodwin, almost on a weekly basis. Also in, in here is the FY20 assessment sheet. The change that's reflected here is where we fill transportation and I've gone up a little bit since we voted in May, April and May. There's been one change since this packet was sent out and that was to circuit breaker and we received about $25,000 more than what I had projected.
Thank you. Who's doing the technology plan?
I am. So the technology plan is specifically stated as an update. In some instances, it could have actually been a table topic because it's not a plan that's being presented tonight for, for first reading or acceptance. It's a working document, but it has been a topic for discussion, whether it be through regional FinCom or through this committee as it relates, in need for an update. So in true transparency, you're seeing a working, kind of evolving document. Yesterday, leadership team, principals had some input and want to see a few more things, a few more media substances put into this thing than, than you even have in your copy. So I just want the, the committee to know, it was really from an informational perspective to let you know that we are moving towards a new plan. Here is some of the direction that you're seeing. We still need some curriculum integration to place into it, some more detail behind the infrastructure. One of the driving force behind trying to get this accomplished, in addition to having an updated plan, was to be able to present to the towns, the regional FinCom, especially where we're looking at potentially an infrastructure capital project and the need for the towns to see kind of what the plan is for the district, if we're going to, you know, support and finance, and they've given every indication that they're willing to do so, but expect there to be, you know, some sequence of events. So I, I did, I take full responsibility, I did not ask the director of technology to be here tonight, so I don't want you to think his absence is a result, he was intending to be here. We weren't prepared to answer specific questions. What I was hoping be able to do is share where we're at with the, with the committee members right now. If there are specific questions or concerns, I've talked to a couple of board members individually. Please bring it to my attention. I'm going to bring it back to my leadership team. The directors were part of that conversation just yesterday and because we can't, we had a couple of things that really came up that we felt needed to be incorporated into this document before it's formally presented. So that's why in the agenda, it's not technology plan 19 through 22, it's simply an update at this time.
I'm happy to hear it's moving. I'm disappointed and a little frustrated that this is where we're at after almost a year. So I, I look forward to a plan that we can review. I would strongly encourage that we get community involvement in building this plan, here, right? And I don't think we've done that as of yet, because that's going to help us with not just addressing the need, but also future growth in that. So it is disappointing this is where we got and I, hopefully, we can address that in short order because we do need to bring this to the towns and get their support as well.
It seems like it's more on the front burner now than it was.
As the leadership team is involving their staff, I've talked to Mr. Owen and certainly other board members, if there is, if there's some expertise and individuals out there that you want to reference to be the director of finance or to me to facilitate that with Mr. Mackimer, I would encourage you to do so. Just give me names and contacts and emails because we obviously know in both communities, there's some very talented people in this area that might be able to offer some insight and help and we certainly would be open to that, as would typically be a task force would involve community members and so forth, so I don't want to, you know, certainly restrict it to be solely an educational piece. We have to have that component, but if there's some community members, especially in the area of technology, that can help us in this process, we can do so.
Sounds like there are.
So, Mrs. Fox, as, I don't, Steve's comments are not new to me, we've had this conversation. I don't necessarily disagree. We've come a long way in relation to kind of really working this through. The director of finance has been instrumental in really locking in some numbers and making sure that there's some, you know, some, some solid numbers and credibility to any financial plan moving forward and we're trying to involve the education, you know, the educational portion of it more and more too, to be sure that it's clearly a curriculum-integrated program and solid for instruction moving forward. So it is going to be a document and you're probably going to see technology updates throughout. I'm not in a position to tell you a, a date at this, this time, other than the fact that it is not slowing down progress in this area.
We probably do need to look at some sort of timetable. Mr. Grayson.
Steve took my, my point. My point was to bring in some external expertise as well from the community if we can. It's going to help sell the project and it, you know, I think sometimes where, where you're involved deeply internally, you may not think in terms of the big picture.
Exactly.
So, you know, that would be helpful.
Contacts directly through my office will make sure I can facilitate that.
So let's do that, if you have anyone you think can, and on kind of short notice, dive in and participate in this. Glad to see that, you know, you're involved in really looking at this, how that's going to play out, but it needs to finalize.
We have, it's a real crossroads in relation to technology, right? We have a couple of potential retirements, so, so we have some reorganization to look at within that department. And so it's a, it's an important time if we're really going to move the, the district forward in the next three to five to 10 years to have that vision and have the right people there, so.
All right, well, let's keep the fire on it. We have new business meeting, oh, the meeting.
Yeah, the first item's informational, unless there's some edits that need to be made. We tried to kind of follow what has been a similar pattern as it relates to presentations.
Mr. Regional FinCom satisfied with the, the schedule?
Yes.
It does.
Oh.
Yeah, the budget aspect does adhere to.
That's what I meant.
Yes. So, so we don't have a formal presentation on the 9th, but Dr. Kablinsky and she'll speak this, will be giving an overview of the recent accountability results, and that's been pretty typical, we've done that in that, that November meeting. Then we file that up with some school results and school improvement plans.
Okay, very good.
If there's any of those other items that come up, obviously, and we could take them out of order, if there's something that comes up in relation to food service, so whatever, we can always kind of move it up. But we always try as placeholders, make sure that they're at least listed one time.
Certainly. And, Dad, the only thing was, we had talked about when Mr. Kabuzio was in last, that we move it instead of having it in the middle of the year to sort of give us a.
Yeah, he's still in January there.
Yeah, you know, I'd leave it to him, but just more of the fact that you got a, a full year, because there's a lot of great accomplishments that happen, right, and we almost shortchanged the spring sports a little bit.
With the way it's set up. Yeah, we did have, we have had that discussion.
Where would we move it, any idea?
You could move it to the May 13th or.
All right.
Yeah.
Or you could have it come twice.
Well, you could do that.
You could push it back to May though too and try to capture that last season.
I hear you, I do. We can talk about it too. Okay, at long last, a free town agreement.
Yeah, so the, I'm sorry.
How many years?
Gina, I think.
I'm sorry, yes.
Just, I'll use this schedule to get back to the technology plan for a second. In lieu of a, a sort of a defined timeline, it may make sense to insert an update at some point because some of the pieces in that plan have recommendations for staffing and obviously purchases of technology for budget purposes, so.
Yeah, budget implications, right.
It may make sense.
Do you have one on the, I think it's January 8th, there's a technology update?
Yeah, there is one listed there, which would kick off the season, but we absolutely, you're right, especially where we could be making FY21 decisions.
All right. Very good. So I'm going back to the FES town agreement.
Yeah, so, so after, so just from a little historical background perspective, we have a lease and assigned agreement with Lakeville or S. Swamson. We had never, previous to me, my predecessors in, in town, for a variety of reasons, had never finalized a lease agreement with the town of Free Town and Free Town Elementary School. The good news is we now have a document that was worked on by the town administrator, supported by the Board of Selectmen. And by the way, it was never the school committee holding up, it was always, we had the signatures here, it was the town side to that and previous boards. So it is my recommendation to accept the lease agreement between the town of Free Town and the school district as presented. There are two original copies that need to be signed by each of the board members if you take formal action tonight. They had already taken their formal action at their meeting in the summertime and I told them we would obviously hopefully take action at our next meeting, which happened to be tonight, September 25th. So it's certainly my recommendation to support the document as presented by the town.
Derek has a question, comment?
Two, two, two points. One, it says in here that we can't sublet the building, which we do, or we have to provide them notice. Well, I just want to make sure we comply with that.
Yep.
With the towns, because we are doing that now.
Yeah.
I understand we didn't have a lease agreement, so we rarely weren't having to hold anything in the past, but.
True.
So to Derek's point where we rent space to the collaborative, what we do, the first step in that process is to inform the town that we're choosing to do so, which would.
So, so we're compliant?
We are in compliance there.
And then my next point will just be a, a broken record is the fact that we lease these buildings, but the money is not, does not come back to the school district directly. So that's always frustrating and these lease agreements prohibit that from happening, so in any event, it almost ruins the motivation to lease that.
Well, that's in both cases.
It is, it's in both towns.
Yeah, Mr. Owen.
Significant, just for what it's, the town's been very supportive in Free Town and likewise, we don't have rental space in, at S. Swamson at this time. The lake, the campus programs where we rent to the collaborative, the region, because it's, the entity takes that. In Free Town Elementary School where we rent three classrooms to South Coast Collaborative, that check is a $60,000 amount, it's $20,000 per space that goes to the town of Free Town.
The general fund.
And I've, I've made a couple of notes on more than one occasion at public meetings in, in where they've supported us in other venues that because of the way the agreement is written, it's set up that way.
It's true. Mr. Owen?
To that point, it allows us to be creative, to make our request for capital improvements at Free Town Elementary School and how the towns use those funds, because that's where it's going back into the school, so.
I, I think it has been, to Derek's, I agree, Steve, I think it has been helpful to encourage the town to put that type of money back in to go to the parking lot.
Yep.
Right? We did not have that actually on our list to get done, but where they found money available, they, they had the parking lot paved.
True.
And that was about, I believe, about a $44,000 item that the town.
They did it quick too. They did a good, yes, Steve?
Go ahead, Steve's not done, so.
Regarding insurance, I know that was a big issue with one of the towns.
Yes.
Does this language cover? So we're not double paying insurance?
Double paying, that's the question.
We're not, we're no longer doing that.
Great.
We only did that for the first 50 years.
In either, in either town.
Right.
Now.
Derek?
Yeah, so back to my point and to Steve's point, I agree, it has helped the discussion from a budgetary perspective, leasing the space, but leadership in towns change.
Yeah.
And that discussion could change.
That is.
We don't have anything written in stone through the lease agreement that, that, that forces that or drives that point home. It's been a very good, open discussion now, we have no idea what the future holds, so that's the problem that I have.
Well, I mean, we consider an amendment to it at some point in both cases, again.
I, I think no matter what, it's going to have to go through the general fund, but I think it'd be appropriated out, is what my point would be.
Yes, but that you could put, you could put language in if they agreed to it, it could be an amendment.
We've, it's taken this long to get this far?
This is true.
I don't think we should even mess with that at this point.
No.
It's something for a future.
It is definitely something to keep on the radar, you make a very good point.
Yeah.
Anyway, I think it's executed, isn't it?
We have, yes, we have the signatures there, we'll get that down to the town.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Where am I?
Did, I believe, before we move on, I don't know unless I missed it, I apologize if I did. I'm not sure we took formal action, the vote needs to be accepted first. The signatures were signed, I don't think there was a motion.
Oh, no, we didn't have a vote. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Yes, thank you for that. Okay, E and D, so that's.
I'm requesting the committee to vote on the closing entry for excess inefficiency that will be certified in October.
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any extension, motion carries? Yes. Go.
Related to E and D, I, I do think this is a step in the right direction. I think Ashley has done some great work in, in moving pieces around and I know the towns were supportive and be able to hold up our end of the bargain of the 125. It, it still is not, it makes us a little bit more comfortable, but it doesn't really make us really comfortable if something was to do that, so I think that's a message we still need to continue. We'll do it at the regional FinCom, that's, this is less than 1% of our annual budget, We'll do it at the regional FinCom, that's, this is less than 1% of our annual budget, so.
But it's trending in a much better direction.
Believe me, it's much better than where it was, but.
Yes, point taken.
Well, it's half of what we had when I came on board, keep in mind, we, the practice was to take it and build it into operational, so that alone has changed.
No, we're not doing that anymore, thank goodness. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, Derek.
Just a reminder, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but we have to remember what caused our E and D to be decreased. That could happen at, at a moment's notice.
That's true.
So, we're in a very, very sketchy area with E and Ds, that we continue to be much better, a little breathable, but keep in mind that that can change on a moment's notice. However, it has been communicated through the FinCom, and Steve's even communicated at this last meeting last week, that if there are any special education costs, the directive of this committee was to go back to the towns.
Right.
So, you know, at least, you know, that's been a clear directive, and, you know, something that we're not looking to dip back in E and D at this point for.
No. Off the table for that one, thank you. So we have some surplus at both Aslons and the Free Town Elementary that we need to vote on, we have that in our packets. Do I have?
I'll make a motion to, can we do them both at the same time?
Yeah.
To accept surplus items as presented for AES and FBS.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, sure.
So, my question is probably for Ashley, what exactly happened with the surplus?
Sure. So, we have to vote from the committee, and then if it is items that are broken, are not usable, we throw them away. If there are items that, there are other items that we can post online and see if anyone would like to purchase them. After so long, if no one purchased them, then we can also throw those away. We can also put them on the OSD website to see if any other communities want them. So, because it's a district, let's say that Aslons had had something that they wanted to surplus, but we could use in a different part of the district, we first look internally to move things within the district.
So have we asked, I'm looking at the two card catalogs in particular, have we asked teachers if they're interested in that?
We have not done anything, it has to come before this board first.
And then we will offer to staff members?
Sure.
I mean, I can picture a card catalog painted nicely, with pencils and markers and with all those things, especially that the elementary K to five people use. I'd rather see our own staff have them first. And then, secondly, if they don't want them, card catalogs on eBay are going for about $800 a piece right now. I don't know what condition these are in.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they are offhand.
So I'd hate to see them trashed or just given up for $10. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think these items qualify, but I know in the past, with some items, we actually sold them for scrap.
We do that with our, with our trucks.
Yeah, scrap metal and things, sure.
You need to go out and get them.
Yeah, usually stuff we have absolutely no use for.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that's probably the case. But if there were any kind of use, what, I'm wondering if there's a mechanism for local nonprofits, they may, they may find some use, and, and some of them may just take it and sell it for money for their own case, but.
That's true.
I, I didn't know if there was a mechanism for that. I'm assuming this, our junk isn't gonna be somebody else's junk anyway, so, but, yeah, I know, that's a good point.
Gina got one more? Oh, stop it. I'm not telling you that. I'll enter, I'm sorry, Derek. The other thing is that, my understanding is that the town of Lakeville is looking for a Saturday at some point, months down the line, to do a public auction of materials that are in the town that are not used anymore, so we could also look into that.
Those are actually fine.
All those steps we could take once you, once you, you know, authorize it as surplus.
So, I'll, go ahead.
We have a motion, a second.
We already have it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the strategic plan.
So, so Mrs. Fox, thank you, I have a first reading of a new, an updated strategic plan. It does reflect the state model, it was something that Dr. Correa facilitated, and then handed off to Dr. Kaplinsky, who did a great job of kind of closing it. If you want to just maybe speak to the, not necessarily the details behind the plan, but the process, she was able to kind of close the deal in relation to what Marlene had led, and we actually had one school committee member, Mr. Owen, as part of that piece.
Right, so as a, as a district team, we took another look at it, the materials that Marlene had left for us, made a few tweaks and changes, and then I sent it out to the whole original district, strategic plan team, took some comments from them, and incorporated their suggestions into the plan, then asked everybody if they, they were all, all set with it, signed off on it, and then just printed it out, and, and gave it to this committee now for, for your input.
So the DESE template is what we followed in here too, so even the terminology is consistent with what maybe you might see from other school districts, we did pull from some other districts as well that were following someone. It's really a streamlined approach now, strategic plans, which used to be multiple pages, twenty-some pages, and it sat somewhere nicely, and looked great, but wasn't really an action plan in relation, and we feel much more confident that what we have here reflects our core values and vision. But, but by all means, we want the committee to have an opportunity, I know you've seen it for the first time, I, I'm not looking for a vote or action taken tonight. Steve was present, we had multiple meetings over the course of the year, Steve, I don't know if you want to comment, we had parents, Mr. Burke was present, as a community member as well, and we had students as part of that process, and we certainly tried to make sure that we had all levels, being secondary, middle school, intermediate, and elementary schools, so we're pretty pleased with the initial.
It was a very streamlined, I think, the way that Dr. Correa ran the meetings was very helpful to keep us on target. For me, it was very interesting, the interaction between especially the students and the teachers, especially around curriculum, what have you. You know, the, the students didn't hold back in their suggestions, critique, what have you, and, you know, the teachers took it in stride and figured out ways that we can improve it, so it's not an easy task, so now we just gotta implement it.
Right. Is it a three or a five-year look ahead?
Three.
Oh, it is three, yep.
Set up as a three. And, and I think the next step probably in the process, and a lot of districts are struggling with what has been kind of a, almost like a two-day weekend retreat type of activity around this, was, we tried to spread that out and tried to still involve all the stakeholders, but wanted to put it out to the community, this is a first reading, I would look for some formal action to be taken, if not, at the next meeting, at the November meeting, so we can kind of move forward. If you have any feedback to give, whether it be through Steve, your representative, or directly to me, I'll be able to share that with the directors, and we'll kind of go from there. Thank you.
Anybody help?
Just a comment on this, I, I think under the state's new accountability system, they had that vocal survey that was students were given as part of the MCAS, is that information something with the new results from that that could be incorporated into this? I see some of the, some of the dimensions are similar with safety and learning and aspects of that.
I'd have to check, Steve, to see, I do know that we did not participate in one survey, so we don't get those results in, from the district perspective, but I'd have to check.
Okay.
That's a good question, though. It's in there. I'm sorry, Derek.
Yeah, one comment, I always get nervous when I see, we measure an impact on items such as decrease in office referrals, decrease in adjustment council referrals, it makes me nervous that we may condone that activity when it, when it may be necessary.
To get the goal of the number, you mean?
Right, right, so I see this, and, and it always, it just makes me shiver a little bit, because, you know, maybe someone's hesitant to send somebody down there, and they really belong there. I, I just, you're gonna, the circumstances what dictates that, it's, it's not these measurements, you know what I mean?
I think the challenge, I don't disagree with it, first of all, as an administrator and as an educator, we, remember, we had a lot of educators on this group who looked at that, it's that fine line between you have to have data, right, it has to be data-driven, so you want to have results and specifics, but you're absolutely right, you don't want them to skew, and, and so you make, so you achieve your goal and not refer students, because that then hurts your kind of whole vision.
Yeah.
Stephen?
This is actually discussed about a lot, and this is around the social, emotional learning piece in general, and a lot of the teachers felt there was education in the support that they need for that, so I think that's where the focus point was around that. It wasn't just an in general topic, it was around the social, emotional learning component, and how we can get some of the education, the support in the classroom, so that way they, so they don't know how to handle it, they're not referring about.
Right.
That was.
I understand that.
That's not really articulated in here, though.
It's in, it's in the pillar around social, emotional learning, so.
Well, there's another pillar that I was mentioning as well.
Yeah.
All right, well, we, we have a chance now to really come through this thing and...
If you come across any areas at all, just please, please forward your information to me, and I can take a look at each of those.
Sure. So now we're in reports to committee.
We're at the directors.
You're first. I'm first. So my report is mostly talking about all the upgrades that we did over the summer. It was very, very busy for our new director of facilities, he had to jump right in and take on a lot of projects. I'm gonna walk you through all the buildings and the upgrades that we have. In your packet, there are also pictures.
Yeah.
Specifically thanking the towns for all of the work that they did in our buildings this year. So to start, the high school, as Dr. Starkey spoke about, and we accepted the donation, the Laker pride sign over the gymnasium, we upgraded the hot water heater for the science labs, and Lakeville just received the Green Communities grant for two, approximately $225,000. Those monies are coming back to the high school, and they're going to do internal and external lighting upgrades. Also, here at the high school, we had an upgrade for food service, they had a new merchandiser in the cafeteria. Over at the middle school, as Jack talked about, there was 32 security camera upgrade, cameras over there, that was through the Safer Schools grant that we received in about end of June, early July. That grant is a quick turnaround, we have to finish the whole project by December, so we're well on our way. We are also upgrading the door strike pads over there, so the fob system, we have a couple doors that are not working, so we'll be fixing those as well. And as Jack talked about, we, we fixed the chiller, so the AC is now running over the middle school. At Gray's, we installed a bike rack, and you can see in the pictures, it's well-used, and we're very happy about that. There are 16 security cameras being installed, we replaced the slide on the playground, we replaced the media and the pool filter, we replaced half the water in the swimming pool, there's also an upgrade in food service for a three-door reach-in freezer, and we're also in the process of completing the boiler study. At AES, the town paved and striped the parking lot, our security grant will be upgraded for 16 more security cameras over there, and new locks. AES does not have the fob system over there, so that will be upgraded this year, and they will also have one. There are also new locks on all of the interior doors at AES. Seven rooms were tiled over the summer, and that was through the town supporting that and painting five classrooms. Also, if you have the opportunity to go to AES, please check out the cafeteria, you'll see a new serving station for the kids, it's lower, so the students can actually see what's in there, instead of just asking what's in there. So Andrea, the pizza instructor, is very excited about it. We also upgraded...
She didn't add that the new director of facilities was questioning the height of it, and whether we had the proper equipment, because it appeared so low.
I believe he's over six feet tall, so.
He did ask me before he did all the work if he should be returning it, if it was supposed to be somewhere else. And we also upgraded the lawnmower over at AES, so he has a new ride-on tractor to, you know, to help him out in the field.
It's not added here, and this is off the script, but both elementary schools also just recently had the mulch built.
All three of our elementary schools actually, so Gray's, FBS, and AES all have had a delivery of wood chips mulch in the last day, so they'll be spreading that over the course of the next week.
Safety issue as a relation, as it relates to the playground, you start to lose that cushion, they decide to go out, so.
Where did the mulch come from? Because I know people question what's in it.
So you have to have a certified mulch?
Yes, I just want to check.
A particular vendor, yes.
Yeah, I know, it has to be trucked in, it has to be a certain type, it's not just general.
So this is mulch for playgrounds, not necessarily for around the building?
Yes, it's playgrounds.
It's playgrounds, specific.
Bob?
Yeah, the, the security cameras, are they all inside, or the, how was it?
Both, in and out.
Okay.
Steve?
This is a great list, and I know a lot of hard work in it. Exciting from the finance side, there's a lot of things on here that are not in the operating budget. Right, so I think, let's carry on that work, as far as prioritizing, you know, I talked about this, the work in the food service, and Andrea went out and got the grants for those, and the security grant, this is great stuff, and I think if we continue to get the priority list of what we can do, and, and then we can have the discussion of where the funding comes from, so it's not so heavily relied on the operating budget, so that's an exciting part of all this list, which is great.
Right, and when we get into FY21's budget, we start looking at our capital planning. Again, we made great strides with that plan over the summer, both with the operational budget and the fact that we did get the Safer Schools grant. That security upgrade, it would have taken us two years to be able to upgrade the rest of schools the way we want to, and we're able to do that by December. So we're very excited about that, I mean, we have access to the cameras in our office, the police have access to the cameras, so it's a great opportunity that we had getting that grant.
Yeah.
These items here were planned, some of them, as you know, we had the security camera upgrades for the middle school and Gray's in our budget, we got to use grant funds instead. The things like the hot water heater, we were planning on replacing that this year, so it was in our, in our general operation.
And then just a side note, which you mentioned, regional FinCom, both police departments were involved as far as the location, both external and what have you for that. Related to AES, do we have a count of how many?
The rooms?
Yeah.
I need to still go over, I haven't been able to go over yet.
How many are left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know there was a plan through that whole aspect, and I know it's been multiple years that we've done a certain number of rooms every year, I'm just curious as far as where we're at, as far as left and...
So Ashley had, Natalie had, we followed up with the principal, so we're, we're not only gonna get the list, but we're asking from priority, from her perspective, from an educational perspective, for example, the library is one of the areas, in addition to some classroom space that needs to be replaced, it's still a work in progress.
So I need to touch on FBS, I wasn't able to get there yet, but they also paved and stripped the main entrance of the parking lot. 16 new cameras will be installed by the end of December, there will also be new locks in that building, and if you look through for the pictures, there's a new sensory hallway in the kindergarten wing, which is really cool, PTO donated that. And actually, Mr. Ward and some PTO members laid it on the floor, so they're Free Town today.
Oh, pictures of that!
Yeah, that's a good picture.
I also wanted to update you on food service, sales are up 2.5% over September of last year, meal counts are up 4% from last year, all of the equipment that we received from the Department of Ed grant is installed and up and running, breakfast counts are up at Gray's, they're from 10 to 12 last year, they're now 25 to 30 every day.
Wow.
And that's because the kids are used to it from the lower elementary schools. Let me see, Andrea gave me a nice update. And we also received a hot chocolate grant, or we got a grant from the Dairy Council, and we're purchasing a hot chocolate machine for the high school, and that's going to start on October 1st, and that will be used during senior privileges and expanding the lunch program.
I'm kind of like that, I didn't know that, I'm kind of excited about that.
Another upgrade for food service is the free and reduced lunch application has gone online, so families do not have to fill out paper applications and send them back in, they can do it online, it's automatic, they know if they've been certified or approved, and you don't have to do all the signage at the school.
Wonderful.
Then, Sharon?
You have to know that I'm gonna ask him about the kindergarten sensory hallway, right? Was that inexpensive?
It wasn't too expensive, it is something I know that we've been talking about at AES, to think about putting it in their kindergarten wing as well.
Okay, thank you. It's so cute.
I'm sure it beats just walking kids around the building.
With regard to security, I know that several years ago, at least in Free Town, the police department had a report with a, with a lot of suggestions on how to improve security, and I'm just wondering how we're doing in relation to that report.
Yeah, and, and I was, I sat at the table, Bob, where that was referenced and work had, or there was a question, the school hadn't done much with that report, I can, I am happy to say that the chief has been very much involved in working with us, with the officers there, and, and I, I think they would say, I can't speak for them, but I'll ask them to follow up, we, we are well on our way in relation to meeting their needs at, at the police department in relation to the various phases, and obviously the grant helped in that piece. But what Bob's referencing, for the members who didn't know, there was a question about this document that kind of sat there, and supposedly was, there wasn't much done in relation to that.
All right.
I, I, I don't believe that would be the case, chiefs have been very much in both towns involved in the process, I would agree.
Thank you.
Same thing with the fire departments, we did walkthroughs of all the buildings with the fire chief this year, and they gave us suggestions, suggestions on things that we should be looking at, things that we should be upgrading. We also got knock boxes for the campus for Free Town, so because Free Town's actually closer, if there is a fire, they'll be arriving first, and they'll have keys to be able to enter the building.
Well, they're right across the street.
Right.
That's helpful. One more question. First of all, I, I just want to thank the staff, all of you, for not only the bike rack, but also the handicapped swingman was replaced this summer, both of those were community requests, and they were handled really quickly, so I appreciate that. Secondly, the Green Communities competitive grant, can you tell me, it's $24,000 and $26,000 for variable frequency drives on pumps and RTUs, can you put that into layman's terms, please?
I can't give you the detailed explanation.
Rooftop units.
That's RTUs, yeah.
But are you looking at the energy audit, or are you looking at the application?
The Green Communities Competitive Grant that is on the Lakeville homepage.
So it's from the energy audit that was done here at the high school, it has to do with, I think that has to do with water pumps, if I'm not mistaken, is that what it's called?
That's on the town of Lakeville website?
On the town, Lakeville website.
Yeah, Nate has the, the application, I know what you're referencing, I just can't explain it in layman's terms at the moment, but let me get some detail on it.
I feel really good, if you can't, I feel real good right now, thank you. But the RTUs are rooftop units, that makes good sense, doesn't it?
The main focus of the grant is more of the fact of what efficiencies can be, be put into place, and the town, and now through the district, has to show those efficiencies over a 10-year plan, 10-year.
Is it a 10-year plan?
So each year, they have access to this X amount of dollars, I think it's 250K, but then they have to show there's energy, less energy consumption, so that's where implementing some of these and then showing the reduction in that.
And that's why we do the energy audit, they tell us everywhere we could make upgrades and improvements through the audit, and then we look at it to say, okay, over that 10 years, where's our best bang for our buck, and then that's where we put it towards the grant. And that's why lighting is a big one for us here, because we're going to do all the parking lots at the high school, and we're going to do the wall packs on the building, so we'll be more efficient.
Yes, Fox, if I may, just add, because she won't reference it, our new director of finance, new director of facilities, had some big shoes to fill, right, between Fred Baker and Bob Sousa, and it's been a real seamless transition, they've done a phenomenal job, they meet weekly. I believe, she won't reference it, but she spent her Saturday with the maintenance and custodial staff, recognizing them for their work, if you want to comment on that, and just, I think in general, I think the, the school culture, the work environment, very positive. We did all this, by the way, first time in my six-year tenure, and I believe it dates 10 years without any overtime all summer long.
Wow.
First time that I believe in over 10 years. Ashley, do you want to make any reference to that?
Sure. Greg and I, it was our mission this summer to really motivate the staff in the custodial and maintenance department. There was a change of leadership, and we wanted to take advantage of that and really bring up morale. So we met with the staff, we set up a plan, we had some members of our, our crew who really stepped up and, and took initiative and really took the reins on how the cleaning was going to go. We were meeting, like Rick said, weekly, they used no overtime to complete all the cleaning this year, and instead of just saying no overtime, and we're going to use the money somewhere else, we're putting it back into the program. So we are buying weed whackers for each of the schools, we're buying leaf blowers, it seems small, but at least they're at the school now, so they have the opportunity to use them, and so it happens to go to the red barn. They're all going to be electric, so they can keep them right inside the building.
So the equipment went back, and you have to really picture, if you think I'm making this up, Friday afternoon, I'm at a different location, and I get a picture from one of the workers on the tractor, like it was his tractor, like it was Christmas, the smile on his face, right, when he got the piece of equipment, it just, but giving back to those schools and giving them and putting resources in their hands to do their job even better and more efficiently goes a long way. I've had a few comments, the people saying it's been a long time. So I see people, and you see also them extending themselves, not that they didn't work hard before, but, but Ashley makes the point, you see head custodians taking that responsibility and working with it, and it was essential that we did all that, right, with so many changes and things we've had, but a lot of.
I'd say they're excited, they're actually at full capacity right now, all the buildings are fully staffed, which I think is the first time in my tenure that that's happened. They had a unit meeting on Saturday, which I attended, I brought them breakfast, and they were so excited about it, and then they're also looking into getting new uniforms, so they're going to have polo shirts, they're going to have new pants, and they're going to have a button-down shirt, so they all look the same, and there's an open house or something of that nature. So it's really nice to see the department really excited about the starting school like we are as administrators.
Nice, that's excellent. Thank you for your hard work. Okay.
I have, I have one more piece before I'm off. We're already rolling into FY21 budgeting, I've included the calendar just for reference. We kicked off regional finance last week, and we showed them this calendar as well, I've already rolled it out to our admin team, which they were a little surprised about, it was the, was it Tuesday, it's September, we're talking about FY21, but everyone's excited, we're already starting to plan and schedule meetings.
Here we are.
This does dovetail into regional financial.
Yes, okay.
So the next director's report, I need a little drum roll, because it's Dr. Kowinski's first.
Yeah.
First report as our new director. Actually, you talk about seamless transition, she's jumped right into it, and I'll let her talk a little bit about her experience so far.
So, so the first thing that I had to do was hold an induction meeting for 41 new staff members to the district this year, one of which was me. So I was in charge of running the induction program and being a member of the, the new class. I have a mentoring coordinator who facilitated with me, who is also brand new, but it was a great opportunity, I think we had a wonderful program, we got great feedback from our new hires in what we offered them, the ability to meet with their new principals, spend some time, also learn a little bit about district expectations, the technology program, that kind of thing. It went for two days, it was very well attended, they got to meet their mentors at this and form their relationships there. So they felt a lot better about the school year starting, having those two days under their belts, and then we rolled right into our staff opening day. We had a motivational speaker, Pam Garimone, who really kicked the school year off to a great start, seven ways to be happier instantly, we all left there clicking our heels, happy happy. And then the next day was the professional development day for the staff, where we dug into programs that we want to see come to fruition during the school year. The PD committee had focused on school safety as the topic of conversation for that particular PD day. What we did differently was that we gave the teachers a menu of opportunities, instead of everybody sitting for two or three hours listening to one speaker, the staff pooled their expertise and offered these programs, CPR training, first aid, teachers could choose three, they were one-hour sessions, so they could get their PDPs from that, and then that was the whole morning, and then in the afternoon, per contract, they had their opportunity to go into their classrooms and, and get those up and running. But again, the feedback from that day was very positive, the teachers liked having the, the choice of what they wanted to go through, so they didn't have to sit through something that they had already just gotten or didn't apply to them. So, so that's something we'll look at in the future to continue to offer. So for our summer updates, we hired two new ELL staff members.
Thank you.
Previously, we only had one. So now we've divided it up so that one of the staff, one of the ELL teachers will just handle elementary students, so she'll go between AES and FES, and then Kate, the other ELL teacher, will work with the upgrades, Grace, the middle school, the high school if, if, if there is somebody there that, you know, comes that, that has that ELL need, right now there is not, but she is certified, Kate is certified, Kate is 12, and they both came with some really good experience from like Fall River and New Bedford, so, so the population that we have here is something that they are very, very comfortable with. And then we did the jump start literacy program again this year, however, what was different is that last year it was only at FES, and this year we added AES to it, so it went for two weeks, again, very well received, well attended, and then the teachers had made some recommendations for next year, I guess in talking to parents, they would love to have a, a meeting, a day in the summer where they could meet with the reading specialists and maybe a few of the teachers to get some tips on how to keep reading alive in the summer for their kids, how to make it fun, what kind of materials can we offer to them, what kind of recommendations can we offer to them. So I had put that actually into the title grant so that we can explore developing that next year and extending that, so that it also includes the, the parents. And the title programs do recommend that we heavily involve parents in decisions and policy, so, so that would go towards, that would speak towards that. The teachers also recommended that we add an additional week to the program next year, so instead of two weeks, that it's three, just to really prevent that summer regression and help with the summer slide. So between three weeks and then some conversations with parents and, and opportunities for them to work with their kids during the summer, we might see some really good results when we stop benchmarking in September, which is what we're hoping for. So in speaking to the title grants, AES and FES both apply for early literacy grants, this is the second year of the grant for AES, so they received $39,000. They'll be working with consultants, they have supplies that are coming in, they have professional development opportunities from that for a school-wide writing program. FES, this is their first year, so they received $5,000. So they'll, they'll begin that process, you know, the $5,000 process, and also work with a consultant, but I've met with the principals of both of those schools, and what we'll do is, we'll work together so that they can all share what they're learning, what AES teachers and administration is learning from that consultant, share it with the FES staff, and then, and create something elementary-wide using this money. They did a great job writing this and getting this grant. And then for our title grants, Title I, Title II, A, and Title IV, we received $45,000 in increase this year, so we added some technology to that. We are going to add two interventionists to the elementary grades, in particular K and one, to work just a few days a week with, with our neediest population. And then our MCAS data was released yesterday. Parents and guardians reports will come out on the 30th, I will do a presentation and speak more to our MCAS scores. I've met with principals, I've met with teachers, we've already started item analysis, we've started digging into what our scores looked like and, and gap analysis and what our plan will be moving forward, and then that's the kind of thing that I'll share with you when, when I do my presentation in November, and I should have some really solid data, you know, at that point, but we've, we've started digging into it already. We have a half-day PD on October 11th for the teachers, that will revolve around grade level curriculum work and goal work. The special educators will get carved out, and they'll work on writing IEP goals with Liz and first staff on that day, and then November 1st is our next first full day of PD. I met with Dr. McCurney at the South Coast Collaborative, because the PD committee decided they wanted SEL, social emotional learning, to be the focus of the full-day PD this year, and then, and then follow through with a lot of that, which also matches what we wanted to do with our strategic plan, too, was increase our social emotional learning capabilities so that we can make these kids successful in the regular ed environment, and they're not pulled out or sent to the office, or the teachers feel supported and have some skills and techniques to use in the class. So when I met with Dr. McCurney, she had some wonderful strategies for us, and some wonderful workshops and professional development opportunities that she can work with us on November 1st in moving forward throughout the school year, too, so that the staff feels supported, it's not a one-and-done kind of a thing, so working with the PD committee and the SEL committee to roll that out throughout the year, so, so it, it doesn't look like it got dropped, and that we make sure that it's supported, and if there's any issues with anything, that we can, we have somebody who's a consultant who can help us work through it. So it's a really solid program that's embedded into the school cultures and the classroom cultures for SEL, and that would also go a long way towards what we wanted to do for our strategic planning purposes over the next three years. And then the, the strategic plan that we had all talked about as administrators, and then some initiatives, from my perspective, I want most of this year to be a listen and learn kind of opportunity. I'm spending a lot of time in classrooms and in schools and meeting with principals and teachers and curriculum leads trying to absorb as much as I can, what does this look like instructionally, district-wide, what do teachers want, what do the principals need and want, what kind of programs do they need to support what's going on in, in classes? This year, we're going to start a principal's book study, just so that we can have educational conversations amongst ourselves, and also stuff that, that pertains to them that they can use day-to-day, that's, that's relevant for them. They've not had that before, I threw it out there and, and everybody was on board, within two hours, everyone had responded back to me via email, so I'm, I'm kind of excited about that. For iReady, we're going to include reading as well as math, we've been doing the math for a year or two now, it's working out very well, teachers are getting very comfortable with it. I met with the curriculum leads today, they were saying that the ones that are tracking the data are showing that the kids who are doing well in iReady and showing high gains on the iReady instructional portfolio are also showing good gains in MCAS. So that's what we're looking for, is these programs that we have, do they match what we want them to do? So we don't want kids seeing, saying they're doing great on iReady, and then they're falling apart in MCAS, so then iReady has no value for us. So that's what we're looking for, is to start to track how are these programs going? So far, iReady Math has been, has been going very well, we're now ready to roll out iReady Reading and also use those diagnostic instructional tools. We plan to start working with the math data analysis, she was somebody that was the math coach in my district, she retired when I did, and we used iReady there, so she's an iReady guru. So a lot of the teachers are a little unsure still of all that this will offer, and so this math data person can help take them through that and make sure that we're using this program with fidelity and that we're getting everything we can out of it, and that the teachers feel comfortable using it. Today, we worked with the Teaching and Learning Alliance at the middle school, so I spent the day at the middle school with the Teaching and Learning Alliance consultant, shadowing classrooms, looking at what that looks like now, and what kind of protocols and, and professional development will offer to them moving forward throughout the school year. That consultant meets five times a year with the, the middle school people. This is something, this is year three of this Teaching and Learning Alliance, and it looks like, from what I learned today, again, a listening and learning opportunity, they see some great strides in the teaching and instructional strategies that we saw today in the classrooms of the middle school, so that was very heartening. And then just sharing the work of the grant consultants, the early literacy grant consultants, and the elementary trainers across all grade levels. It'll be a good conversation to start, and then we can grow that up into fourth and fifth grade and, and move it up the line once we develop rubrics, calibrate student work, that kind of thing.
Have a question, ma'am?
Two questions. The, can you shed some light on how the, the difference between the two elementary schools, once in first year, once in the second year, and how did that play into this?
The, from what I understand, last year, Bethany Penault from AES applied for this grant and received $5,000 to begin the process, and they liked what they saw. So the state gave them the opportunity to apply for this second stage, so that's where the 39 came from, and that allowed them now to get a consultant that comes into the school and works with them. Where with, so with Bethany talking to Mike, and, and, you know, everybody looking at writing scores and that writing is a focus for district, district-wide this year, Mike and Bethany had a conversation, he had a conversation with his staff, they decided to apply for the first-year piece of it, but that doesn't preclude us from being able to dovetail some of what AES people are going to be exposed to with their consultant and what Mike will be exposed to. So Mike and Bethany and their teams are both going on October 11th to meet with the state consultant to begin the process, and then, and then the consultant will work more heavily with AES because that's where the bulk of the money went, and then next year, Mike will apply for the second leg of it, so hopefully he'll get the $39,725 so that they can continue the work. In the meantime, we'll have district-wide conversations and vertical team conversations, so this work keeps going.
Yeah, I, I only bring it up because I know the committee has tried to, both elementary schools with the same resources.
Talk to each other, do the same. Right, and that's why we want them talking to each other and working together, yeah.
Just Ashley's going to.
So there's a commitment to, from the teachers that had to be made to attend trainings and things of that nature, or you weren't able to receive the grant.
And it had to be a certain percentage of their.
Okay.
Right, so last year AES had the commitment from the teachers, and now after seeing AES go through the process, I would, I don't know all the details, I wasn't there, but FES has decided to go through that same process this year.
And then my second question, the math data analysis coach, where's the funding for that coming from?
The title grant.
The title grant, okay.
We received some additional funds with the title grant, we pay for iReady through the title grant, so I wanted to just make sure that while we still have these funds, that we could get the teachers solid with using this iReady program, and making sure that the, the kids were getting the most out of it also, and it's, it's her expertise, so.
Okay.
Sure. And I think I heard you say two interventionists for grades one and two, are those new positions? No, those, they are retired teachers, they did this last year from, I think, six weeks, May to June.
We're going to follow, yes, Maria Martin and Beth Corsier.
Okay.
Were the two individuals last year, and it was very successful.
Yeah, so Marlene had recommended that they be put back into the grant this year. Yeah, so Marlene had recommended that they be put back into the grant this year. And where we received some extra money, I was able to do that.
So are they year-round or throughout the whole school year or just the end of the school year previously?
This year, I just spoke to the principals about how they want to use them and when they want to use them. We were thinking one hour a day, two, maybe three days a week. And we were just trying to plan out what that was gonna cost and, yeah.
For the whole school year?
Well, no, starting in October. Because in September, we're benchmarking and getting things going. Once we have all the benchmarking data, then we know who our population is that needs the intervention. So we figured mid-October through to maybe the Christmas holiday and then pick up again like mid-January and have them work with the kids just before our MCAS testing and then see what the end of year looks like. We're thinking that the bulk of instruction during like October to January and then again once MCAS starts to come into play just before then, to give the kids a little solid boost and then look at how much money is left and how much time they want to commit because they are retired.
It's more of a scheduling piece, especially the second half, right? Because a lot of those kids aren't involved in MCAS testing per se, but the focus changed a little bit because of the grade level.
Yeah, that's right, they're not. So I heard you say one or two hours a week, one, two, three hours a week? Is that what you said?
Yeah, in one hour, in one hour, well, one-hour increments.
Increments for those.
Yes.
We can have Pat share when it gets more involved from Mike and Bethany what it looks like this year.
Right, and when we talk to the retired people, one of them, she's retired, so she's away until, I think, the beginning of November.
Yeah, the two, everybody here I think knows that the two talented, both solid educators, both very much committed to the schools. We have others, too, actually. So which, we've been very fortunate that we've had a cadre of individuals who have volunteered and come back and offered their services for our kids, so.
Yeah, just to lay all the support.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, if there are no other questions, Mrs. Fox, I just want to add, similar to Ashley in many ways, Pat had big shoes to fill, right, with Dr. Correa coming in, but really has made a seamless transition and jumped right in. I think the fact that she was a principal, an elementary principal, a practitioner, I think you heard a lot in this report that makes a solid connection with educators. It's classroom activities, it's student-centered, it's having an understanding of what it's about. Keep in mind, if you remember her resume, pretty talented, high-flying school that she came from and brought it there and was placed there for that reason. And so, you know, I'm excited, I gotta be honest, at being a secondary person with my background, when I see her sitting down talking to Liz Sullivan and Mike Ward and Bethany Pinnott, when you think about the foundation of our school district with where Dr. Starkey and others are taking the high school, we're in a good place. I mean, so there's a lot of conversations happening. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but I think she stepped in and really recognized. She didn't mention the first day, she was excited, she came back the first day, if I may, on staff and talked about what a positive experience it was in all her years. And I think it says something a little bit about our school community.
It was fabulous. It was the first day of school, opening school was fabulous. And what really was the icing on the cake was after Mr. Medeas had told me that we would be serving breakfast, I found out I wasn't cooking it.
Even better.
What?
That's right. One year we did, too, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Well, not to be outdone.
Yes.
Yes.
Liz gets to finish, come up last with the report, so.
Yes, that's always, that's always the way. Welcome back, and here we go. I want to also start with a summer update. We had a new, improved extended school year this year in which 126 of our students participated. We made some changes to the program. We made it more academically focused. We made sure that outside activities and enrichment were aligned with an academic skill that the students were working on. And from a logistical standpoint, we also moved, we housed all of our students pre-K to 12-plus at Grace. This was a great benefit for the students and families. Everything is onsite with the RAP Care, the Kids Cafe, and it provided a lot of continuity and sort of less juggling across groups.
Sorry, excuse me.
I'll also say this year, we tied in our teachers to do an end-of-ESY report on the academic goals that were addressed over summer and similarly to any related service that the student receives, so that parents were getting, you know, a report on what was done and what activities the students participate in. A big thank you to our teachers who, we do pay them, but they volunteered to work over the summer, so we're very grateful for the teachers and staff who made the program successful. And I received very positive feedback from the summer. Also this summer, we received update from the DESC, the Tiered Focus Monitoring Report. I referenced this many times last year. We now have the date when the auditors will be coming to us. That is the week of January 20th, which is actually, it's a short week, so that is also good. And it is outside the skill, both the testing, MCAS and whatnot. Certainly, they could come in October, which is not great. We're just starting the school year up. And then, of course, when you hit the spring, we have many different obligations and testing. So it's a good time. We have plenty of time to, you know, get prepared and finalize so that we can receive them in. As you know, there is, this is the first year with the Tiered Focus Monitoring process, and so we will let you know how that will play out. Generally, there is school committee involvement in terms of an interview in addition to the site visit. But at least we have the general week. We don't have any more information yet. And again, this touches both my area of special education, civil rights, educational stability and homelessness, and military families. So I know that Pat and I will each have a part of that, and we will, we'll be working together to make it a seamless audit. And I've outlined next just a couple of areas that we'll be looking at over the course of the school year with regard to special education, program evaluation and planning. In analyzing the data this summer of last school year, we've made sort of the following targets in addition to our day-to-day work. The first item is the social emotional program. We are partnering with the South Coast Educational Collaborative to strengthen and improve our therapeutic learning class in its second year of inception at AES. It is getting off to a great start. We've already had the collaborative in and working very closely with the classroom teacher. Ultimately, the goal is to extend that out as need warrants and the student need dictates. That has not been necessary, and we continue to make improvements in that area. Next is the life skills program. Together with the life skills teachers, we're piloting a formalized, aligned, standard-based curriculum. It's Unique Learning Systems, if you want to Google it. It provides for a more systematic improvement in this population of our students. We currently have FES grades, the middle school and high school with this student goal of providing consistency and continuity and a continuum of the developmentally appropriate areas for the student. One of the features of the curriculum is it provides assessments and tools that the teachers can develop, the relevant activities and materials embedded within the program. It also has developmentally and grade-appropriate, from pre-K to grade 12-plus, content areas, again, aligned with Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, as well as social skills, activities and curriculum, and current events. And we've already had one kickoff meeting with all of the staff and principals at the schools, and they are really, really liking it. We do have a 60-day free pilot, and then we will explore from there where we would like to go in terms of implementing it as a program across those settings. Similarly, we are piloting the Impact Ability Program, which is a program that teaches students with disabilities actual real-life skills and tools to self-advocate for themselves, recognizing unsafe situations, and how to respond with appropriate behaviors or strategy for student safety and promoting healthy life skills. And lastly, in conjunction with CPAC and the middle school, we are piloting student care cards, which really streamlines information in all of the life skills programs so that in the event the teacher is out or there is an emergency, everything will be regarding the student, their particular medical issues. It will be right on a handy card available to the sub or school staff who may be stepping in. And again, this was in response to family and community, you know, request for this and partnered with our CPAC.
And that's not a HIPAA issue?
No, it isn't. The student, when a substitute comes in, there's actually...
Just checking.
Absolutely, yes. The information that they would need in terms of IEPs, that's all covered out there. Our agents are employees by their, their teaching or sub contract with the district. Also changes to the related services for our speech and language pathologist to meet student needs. We've reorganized our existing staff around the different levels to make sure that we can meet the students where they're at. I think everyone was adjusted except for our Free Town Elementary speech pathologist. And one of, going back to Mrs. Fox's questions, the pre-K enrollment, we, those numbers are higher because our pre-K substantially separate intensive program actually has grown, and that was thank you for your support for the second teacher there. So those numbers are higher in the substantially separate program there, but will grow continuously throughout the years as students turn three and come into the district.
That makes sense.
With our speech, again, very happy to report that we are managing our responsibilities for students within our budgetary constraints, so that is, that is very helpful. In terms of occupational therapy to meet student needs, we've also had to, had to reorganize that. We had previously had an OTA, which is an assistant, someone who has a state license, but they're not certified and credentialed to provide evaluations. So that person was here for three days a week. We had just a very large rise in our level of evaluations, and we had to supplement through some contracted services through the collaborative and local collaboratives. This year, we worked closely with South Coast to provide a registered license OT, and we have increased that to four days. So that's all under the guise of our grant, and that is not coming off of, you know, a separate budget item. This is really much more cost-effective to implement this change this way as opposed to individually purchasing evaluations, which can get costly and more piecemeal and sort of less organized for the, for the district. In terms of our district services, again, very, a big thank you to the committee for the BCBA position. As you know, we transferred our contract with Bradley Hospital School and have an onsite in-district BCBA right here in our programs. She is currently finalizing, and we're rolling out this week some protocol on how our staff can assess behavioral assessments and services and how to refine the parameters and purpose for the district ABA program. Again, this is looking at, while there are social emotional and social skills aspects of that, certainly, the perspective of the BCBA is really from a behavioral science approach, so that taps into different items, different areas than a psychologist or a counselor who's gonna come at that from a different lens in terms of a therapeutic cognitive behavioral therapy type of, type of background. Everyone that I have gotten feedback from absolutely thinks that she's fantastic and it's off to a really great start, so very, very thankful and happy about that. Our psychological services, similarly, we have a new school psychologist, Dr. Flynn. This is not a new position, this replaces retirement. We will continue to monitor, monitor the need for our psychological support so that we can, we can meet our own needs without, again, having to rely on contracted services, which, again, due to the referrals and evaluations last year, we had to contract for. So certainly, we're very grateful to have a sort of a doctor-level person on staff who can also, you know, do some neuropsychological work when those issues arise in addition to her evaluation and testing protocol and psychological services. And just while, just jumping down to central office staffing, again, before we get to professional development, we continue to monitor and review the reorganization that was made prior to my arrival in terms of the elementary and secondary staff being able to provide support to the schools and the principals, the teachers that we need, and also, you know, balancing the out-of-district, off-site administrative demands. So that will continue to be something that we're gonna look at throughout the school year. Professional development, I think echoing what Pat said, that with so many, you know, new teachers, we have developed professional development specific to special education, entitled special ed boot camp as part of the teacher induction program. The goal is to develop and retain high-quality, well-informed teachers, and we'll provide them with the information and the strategies that newer teachers might not have had an opportunity to develop around this very broad and complex area. It will also allow them to get their educator PDP points in this area and, and continue to develop and refine their skills as educator. Lastly, for professional development, we talked about the November 1st date. This really builds upon our all-day special ed professional development from last year where we looked at procedures and protocols, best practices, and really dig down deeper now into the process with the staff that attended, honing in on IEP measurable goals and goal writing, which is really the proxy of what we do every day. We want to see what the, what that growth is over that 12-month timeframe and really making sure we're getting to the heart of the matter. That is it for content. I will move on to family and community engagement. Again, many thanks to our CPAC volunteers for their board participation. I've also listed for you the meetings that we've established after our summer meeting with the CPAC to, to share these dates with you. I will note that there is one change since, since I wrote this report on Friday. I worked with CPAC, they would actually like the October 2nd date to be the Parents' Rights presentation. So we will, we will be doing that on October 2nd here in the Group Projects Room, starting at 6:30. And I welcome any of you to attend the Parents' Rights presentation or any other meeting I know that some of you have in the past. Again, oh, an update for CPAC. Also, we have supported their membership to the Federation for Children with Special Needs, which will further enhance their growth as a, as a unit and as a mandated regulatory body for the district. So we're looking forward to that. Lastly, but not leastly, and this is like very good news, if you flip over to the out-of-district enrollment, I just wanted to highlight that we have our lowest number of out-of-district students in the past couple of years. And certainly, I thank you for your continued, you know, endorsement of our programs and funding, you know, new initiatives and teachers so that we may retain and serve more of our students and have to rely less on very specialized programs within the district. I will note that we've had, this number is not, is, represents two retrievals of students, and then the remaining students would be students who graduated and are moving on.
That's great news about the out-of-district numbers. Was that anticipated from a budgetary perspective?
Well, yes and no. We, we project, and, you know, we now have, you know, scheduled bi-weekly meetings together. Oftentimes, if a student is graduating at the age of 18, we, it is really hard to be able to gauge whether they will be accepting their diploma or remaining as a student in sort of a, sort of a post-secondary for that 18 to 22 period. So we have to be, and as we discussed with Ashley, we need to be conservative that we're able to cover our costs. So we make those assessments, and we made those assessments throughout the school year. So we also need to keep in mind that issues may come up, which is, are gonna necessitate a student being placed out of district, and so we do plan for those contingencies as well.
My second question, can you just briefly touch about sped, transportation, just more of, are we in a better position with the outsourcing, with the budget changes, as well as I know there was concerns last year about our own internal fleet? Where are we with that from a quick start of the year?
I'll start and then kick it over to Ashley. How is that? So... So in working with Ashley and the van situation last year and Irene, the supervisor for the drivers, we actually identified two vans that were being put for purchase, that we were able to purchase for very low miles and a very reasonable monies. So since then, we've been working together on that issue and it remains more work to be done in that area and we are doing that. Ashley, do you want to add in terms of?
So we did, we went out and we purchased two used vans. One was to support a wheelchair vehicle that would not pass inspection in the following school year, so we needed to replace it to service our students. With that being said, we did that within the money we had budgeted for out-of-district transportation. It was actually more cost-effective to purchase these vans, bring back two routes from Vanpool and hire, we had some substitute drivers that were able to take on a route, they're splitting it, and we hired one additional driver.
Good.
And that, we're going to continue to monitor as we have kids moving in and out. We're working with Irene very closely to say, okay, are there any kids along the route that we can put on our, take away from Vanpool and bring back into the district?
So we continue to maintain, I think at one point going back, the story was, would we be able to kind of outsource that? And I would say at this point, we're not in a position to do that, nor is it cost-effective or the most efficient. We still have that hybrid. I would probably say, I don't know what percentage is, but the percentage has actually shifted a little bit back to, based on the recent purchase with a couple of routes. And so we still have that balance of using Vanpool, which we still use, and the collaborative does some transportation for us and obviously our primary source, but all within the transportation budget as it exists. I don't see a savings per se, slight savings in the two, but-
We're continuing to monitor. I'm not nearly as concerned as I was last year when we were having these conversations. I think we have a really good handle on it and we're having a lot of conversations about it. Hopefully, if the educational, the financing reform kind of goes through in the next few years, we'll see those reimbursements in circuit breaker, so.
Good, thank you.
Yes. I had, last year with, I know that the referrals were way up for testing. Did you find any trends as to the reasoning behind that?
Well, yes and no. Obviously, the pre-K is going to get a lot more referrals because of the student population that they have. I think that as a district, in terms of looking at RTI models, that's an area that we can improve. And I think that, you know, some of the things outlined today go to prove that, go to that point in terms of improving interventions so that special education and referrals isn't sort of the only, you know, game in town, which special education serves a very specific set of students. And we need to make sure that we are serving those students and other students that can be served by the intervention process, that those students receive intervention and are able to maintain the general curriculum.
Okay. I would just hate to see students put into an intervention model that truly needs special education services-
Oh, absolutely.
-and not have that referral process in place for testing if it's a student.
Well, the referral process is when we receive a note from a parent or, you know, we do act on that. There's not like a pre-referral process. You know, the student, we get referrals from early intervention, we get referrals from parents or guardians, and also don't forget the building-based support teams who are meeting as data teams to look at student growth and to identify struggling students. So we get referrals from all of those processes, from all of those areas so that we can, you know, implement the special ed process. There is not a you must go through an intervention prior to evaluation. I have not seen any issue with that whatsoever.
Okay. And I have another question. With regards to the central office staffing, you touched upon that a little bit, but where do you see that going?
Well, I think that's what we're going to look at this school year. This is the third year of the reorganization, moving from a pre-K to grade three model with a part-time staff member and then switching everything from a grade four to 12-plus to the other. So in prior years and prior to my tenure, we had 2.0 and actually, when you look at that, we actually had decreased staffing, but yet we have increased needs. So we need to be able to make sure that we are, you know, meeting our obligations to, you know, thoroughly evaluate under timelines and following the process.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
If there are no further questions, I just want to add, Liz, we have had a real solid summer in relation, it's an extended year, there is no summer down in relation to student services. And so we were really pleased the way the programs ran it at the intermediate school. I think that worked out extremely well. She's referenced a lot of the activities. We have a lot of new staff, right? We have some changes in relation to delivery of services. And so, you know, one of the conversations Liz and I have had, and I'm excited and she is as well, is their visibility in getting out to the schools and connecting with staff and getting to know people and do those types of things. And she hasn't really touched upon that, but that's certainly been something that's been really apparent early in the year that I think is going to bode well for us down the line, especially with so many new players in that area. But I'm real pleased with where, kind of where we're at and obviously the challenges when you start a school year, especially with so many new staff members and programs. I will say this, I think we're probably the best staff to be in special education. Would I say it's ideal? No, but in my last three to five years, we've provided some additional supports. I mean, keep in mind that sometimes when you think you're saving on out-of-district, you've got to remember when you're bringing students back or bringing them in, you need to have the staffing and the supports that, or it fails, right? So very early on, after the initial, you know, thrill of their child returning to the neighborhood school, it falls apart. We're trying to put those things in place with the collaborative and provide some supports and Liz is facilitating that. So in reference, Laura, to your piece, I'll just give you one forecast that Liz probably wouldn't. I can't see a part-time in the second position, right? I think they need to be two full-time positions and I can't speak to how we're going to reorganize that and that's kind of the conversation. I think we've increased our staff there, we just need to look structurally at a system that Liz really inherited, right? She came in the third year of those contracts, those individuals are this year, they're not aligned. So it's a perfect opportunity to explore ways to better, you know, potentially become more efficient. You know, I think you'll see as we kind of roll those budget meetings out and things, you'll see a little bit more evidence of that. Thank you.
All right. We're almost at two hours here, so let's zip along with the superintendent and superintendent's evaluations.
I could be real quick. I can-
Go for it.
We have not met and that's pretty, it's part of the course this time of year, right? I think I'll have an update October 9th or November. The DESC, the good news is they've come out with a new pilot and they're trying to streamline the process for school committees and superintendents with, I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights. One, instead of a one-year cycle, they're moving to a two-year cycle on evaluation. Makes a ton of sense. You have to have, you have to be an experienced superintendent, 16 years. So I qualify for that for this school committee. So what you do is you submit annual goals, you do a little bit later in the year, it will fall consistent with our pattern, and then it will be every two years an evaluation. I'll provide you even the standards, they've streamlined all those indicators down. We received that this summer, so I'll roll that out to you. It's being piloted now and I'll share that at a future meeting at all your places to where, kind of where we're at. But that's the update right now. I'll develop some goals based on a lot of the data that's rolling out and, you know, I think as we have done in the past, I think the new model actually kind of fits in nicely what we've been really kind of doing. We've been talking about that expansion. It seems like you can't really do the goals and by the time you do the goals, the end of the year is coming and they kind of realize that. So, and that's straight from MAS, MAS-C.
Okay, that's good to know. Now I think we're up to you guys here with the regional fin count.
We had our first meeting last week. Our next meeting is November 5th. Just more of a quick update over the summer, a quick thank you to the towns. We do have a couple of new town representatives on the committee with the Freetown Finance Member and well as a Lakeville Board of Selectmen Member. We did highlight some funding concerns that outside of operational that we need to figure out, including special ed going forward, gray spoiler, technology, so none of which should be a surprise as we further these conversations.
Thank you. You have anything to add? No? Great. Policy?
Yeah, I was thinking you were going to- Yeah, we reorganized tonight. We had a pretty good meeting tonight. We plowed through about 13 sections of Section J. Yes, it was, some of them were small, I will admit that, but some of them had some pretty healthy dialogue around them. I think we have 20 sections left to go.
In J?
In J. Oh, boy.
J is the last one.
J is our last. That's right, J is our last.
Because it's only the 10th letter of the alphabet. You have me nervous.
And we're going to meet again on October 9th.
Thank you.
By 30.
So, Ben Product, now you had something to say, Eric?
I do have a couple of, quick, I promise, as I heard that two-hour limit coming up on other. And they're not in particular order of importance and you'll see why I say that at the very tail end. The first is please be aware, and Lisa Pacico is well aware of this, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Department of Early Education and Care are collaborating on new federal requirements. So the program, after-school program, is now being required to adhere to what school programs are and what that means is completion of health and safety trainings, health and safety monitoring visits, requirements of comprehensive background. Some things are already in place, Lisa, just so you're aware, as the direct, just in case you've seen it, there may be some costs associated because we're grandfathered in, because we're a program that already exists, we have one year to be in compliance in true mandate fashion, right? There's no money attached to it other than you have to do it. The good news is we have a longstanding director who's very familiar. She's actually participating in a webinar on the grant and what the requirements are this Friday. She's going to keep me updated, I'll keep you updated. I'm just making you aware.
That state or you said federal requirements? So is this coming down from Washington or is it coming down from Boston?
It's coming down from the recently implemented federally funded childcare developmental block grant.
Oh, well, that's supposedly discretionary.
So it does impact the out-of-school programs and specifically our program here.
I always get worried when we have to do federal reporting.
So we're not, we'll have more info as it comes out, but Lisa wanted to reach out to me specifically to make me aware. I simply got the same notice and she's following up and-
Good.
-we'll do what we need to do over the next year to be in compliance, clearly.
Very good.
Thanks, Chris. I want to bring to you, Mrs. Fox says the chair is aware, we have made a request through the athletic department for a middle school level waiver for our boys swim team. Our numbers are down for boys swim. We actually tried to reach out to some communities about co-op and found no interest. There's a lot of detail behind it. Communities don't want to jump into, no pun intended, the pool, the details behind it. So there was no interest from surrounding communities. Having said that, so make a long story long, the AD and principal have requested that there is interest at the middle level in allowing eighth graders to participate in the high school program. There's already some identified students. We're very excited about interimural program that we have going at the intermediate school right now. So I think it's maybe a little lull on the action, but I'm encouraged. I mean, here we have the facility. It's disappointing for those of you who remember the swim program, I remember coming in and seeing the pool, you know, 50 and 60 in numbers. But that is not for the girls program, that is for the boys and it is to maintain an existing program. Athletic director needed the signature or the okay of the superintendent and ultimately the school committee chair was aware. I'll have Mr. Cabusio at one of the future updates, give more detailed background, but we're proceeding with that request at this time.
And the interimural is good news, you know? We spend money on this pool, you want to make sure it's getting used to life, so.
It's been a huge hit. We have had an after-schools interimural program, use of the pool, and it's taken off. We've got great numbers there. And last but not least, it is my privilege to attend the MAS-C Lifetime Achievement Award for Mr. Robert Clark.
Well deserved.
Mr. Clark would definitely be ready to say motion to adjourn real quick if he's going to, but he's not going to be able to do that quite yet on me. So at the joint meeting on Thursday, November 7th, I will be attending along with Mr. Clark and I believe Mrs. Fox, and it's open to anybody if you want. It's a 6:30 dinner, an award that Mr. Clark will be recognized at.
Well, I think what happens is MAS-C looks around to find an elderly person that probably won't be-
Wait a minute, I got one of these awards. I'm younger than you.
Elderly person that won't be around much longer and that makes them feel good when they do that.
So I don't need a commitment from anybody at this point, but I know I've already talked to Jean who initiated the piece and so Jean, I believe, is going to attend. I'm going to be representing the district. We typically go down there. If there's anybody else that is interested through René?
Just let me know because I'll have to register you and put you in front of the votes.
So I just want to say that I'm embarrassed that it took this long for me to, I always would like miss the deadline.
Darn it.
Because I don't know anyone who deserves a Lifetime Achievement Award more than Bob Clark.
That's right.
So this time I didn't miss a deadline.
Thank you.
No.
And he's actually going to the dinner. That was my first piece when I gave him. I said, come on, Mr. Clark, you're going to go, right? Attorney Long was very pleased to hear that too. He's usually down there and he made a point to say he's going to try to make sure he connects with Mr. Clark too.
I got to believe that Bob's probably one of the longest-serving school committee members in the state.
I'm sure you're right.
I got to believe that. Well, in response to longevity and to be serious from, and it sounds like a cliche, but it's been an honor and a privilege to represent Freetown on the board all these years and politically, I'm going to try for one more three-year term, so we'll see what happens, but-
Good luck to you, Bob.
Thank you.
Again, through my office, through René, if there's any interest, please let me know, but we're thrilled to go down there and be there for Bob as he gets recognized.
We'll be the cheerleading section.
Thank you.
I didn't even mention another, but it's, I see Mr. Owen waving this piece. Ironic that we're just recognizing the lifetime, but you notice we also have the senior breakfast already slated for the fall too in both towns. With a lot of receptive communication to Mr. Owen at Lakeville where in the past they have not, they assured me it'd be on their website and in the newsletter and so forth, so I'm encouraged, I'll find out what the numbers are.
Well, these are the Bob Clark breakfasts.
Yes, we could name it that, actually.
We need to.
That might be the next step.
So he'll continue to come and serve coffee?
Yeah. Bob, you're going to eat good in the next month, huh?
Mrs. Fox, we just listed some of the dates there, including the breakfast, some early dismissal. We do have an informational executive session.
I think that we need to do that then, so we're not going to-
But we do not need to go back into open session.
That was what I, okay. I'm sorry, Sherri had it, put that down.
You have a question?
I just wanted to make sure that the Thursday is correct.
It is, it's a different, yes.
Wednesday is usually breakfast day.
They usually, one's a Wednesday, the other is actually a Thursday. That's correct.
I'll make it quick. I just wanted to have a shout-out. My understanding is that one of the local flower shops, Heritage Flowers and Blooms, provided bud bases for every single staff member, bus drivers and van drivers.
In the entire, in the entire school district.
Over 400?
Over 400. Over 400.
Quite nice.
I was actually, I actually went into the establishment on a personal note and it was the next day, so I kind of got the heads up that that was coming, it was kind of neat to see.
Have we got to thank you for going out to them?
Yes, from a variety of angles, from schools and things, yeah.
I did, a few of us did, yeah.
Okay.
It was such a lovely gesture, we loved it.
Outstanding.
Made our day. It really did.
Of course it did.
I had a call with Darlene, right? Darlene's parents. And so I called her back the next, after everyone had received and to thank her as well, how happy she was.
I just want our businesses to do that.
Generous, yeah, phenomenal.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
And then we'll call in.
Yes, to go into executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
Thank you. So we have to do a what?
Be good.
Oh, no, not this one. Yes, sorry.
Okay, Chief Fox?
Yes.
Mary Barry?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
Sarah Trisha?
Yes.
Laura Vanstone?
Yes.
Will Thankland?
Yes. Yes.